I called to order the regular business meeting of the Lakewood City Council on March 25th, 2024 at 7:24 PM. To connect to the council meeting, please use one of the following links at Lakewood Speaks, LakewoodSpeaks.org or Lakewood.org/councilvideos. Anyone who would like to address the city council on this specific agenda item, which we are not here, sorry about that. Can we start with a roll call, please?
Certainly, Mayor. Strom?
Here.
Olver?
Here.
Mayau Guerrero?
Here.
Stewart?
Here.
Rain?
Yes.
Sharazai?
Here.
Labir?
Here.
Nystrom?
Here.
Lo?
Here.
Cruz?
Here.
Sinks?
Here.
Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you. And from here, if you are able to stand, please do so with us for a moment for the Pledge of Allegiance and afterwards we'll remain standing for a moment of silent prayer. for the Pledge of Allegiance, and afterwards will remain standing for a moment of silent prayer. All members of the city council have the responsibility to comply with the terms of Section 7.2 Prince B of the Charter and excuse themselves from voting on any matter in which they determine they have a personal, financial, or business interest. The city council is empowered by Charter 7.2 Prince B to agree by unanimous vote excluding the member at issue to excuse any member of the council from voting on a matter in which they determine such member has a personal, financial, or business interest. Well, tonight, we get to start off with some fun. I'm very excited to be able to go through two public proclamations tonight, one of which acknowledging a very longstanding, very committed community member, and then separately addressing something that affects every community member or can with related to health issues. So first, I would like to welcome up Dr. Margie Cook and family, if you'd all like to join, and we'll go ahead and read your proclamation from the front. Okay. Whereas it is with profound sadness that the city of Lakewood, Colorado, and the Lakewood City Council acknowledges the passing of Felix Wade Cook, Sr., a distinguished member of the community of Lakewood. And whereas Felix Wade Cook, Sr. passed away on Sunday, February 4th, in the comfort of his home and accompanied by his devoted wife of 60 years, Dr. Margie Ball Cook. And whereas Felix Wade Cook, Sr. served diligently on the board of the Colorado Gibbs Foundation for 11 years, from 2005 to 2016, leaving an indelible mark on the organization with his unwavering commitment and passion for their mission. And whereas Felix Wade Cook, Sr. was a stalwart supporter of the Jefferson County community, notably as a CASA volunteer advocating for the most vulnerable among us, demonstrating boundless generosity through volunteerism and philanthropy. Whereas Felix Wade Cook, Sr.'s impact extended throughout Jefferson County, evidenced by his involvement in numerous community initiatives and organizations, including his role on the Jefferson County Judges Judicial Review Board, his active participation in the seat with the Senior Resource Center, and the Action Center, and his dedication to building and nurturing community connections through his involvement with local Kiwanis Clubs, Our Savior's Church, and West Metro Chamber. And whereas Felix Wade Cook epitomized the values of family, education, community, service, and philanthropy, leaving a legacy that will continue to inspire and uplift the community for generations to come. And whereas the city of Lakewood would like to express heartfelt appreciation and gratitude for his contributions to his local community and our local community. Now therefore, on behalf of the city of Lakewood, I, Wendy Strom, Mayor of the city of Lakewood, Colorado, by virtue of the authority vested in me, do hereby proclaim that Felix Wade Cook, Sr. is honored and remembered. And given this day today, March 25th. All right. All right, number two. Yay. Will you come stand by me? Do you mind? Okay, thank you. All right, do you want to hold it while I read it? Okay. Proclamation for March as Colorectal Cancer Awareness Month. Whereas one in 23 men and one in 25 women of the United States will be diagnosed with colorectal cancer, amounting to an estimated 145,000 people being diagnosed this year. And whereas over 52,000 people died of colorectal cancer in 2020. And whereas one in 10 individuals diagnosed with colorectal cancer under the age of 50 are 58% more likely than older patients to be diagnosed with late-stage disease, stage three or stage four, with incident rates expected to increase by more than 140% by 2030. Whereas affordable take-home colorectal screening options exist, and 60% of deaths could be prevented with timely screening. However, one in three individuals are not up to date in their screenings. And whereas colorectal cancer incidence and mortality rates are disproportionately higher among minorities, with Black Americans having a 20% greater chance of being diagnosed with colorectal cancer, indigenous communities also have higher rates of colorectal cancer than their white counterparts, and Ashkenazi Eastern European Jews are one of the highest at-risk ethnic groups for colorectal cancer out of any other group in the world. And whereas there is currently no cure for colorectal cancer, and it is the second-leasing cause of cancer deaths in the United States among men and women combined. And whereas it is critical that people of all ages show the signs and symptoms, know the signs and symptoms of the disease, and whereas observing Colorectal Cancer Awareness Month provides a special opportunity to offer education on the importance of early detection and screening. Now therefore, on behalf of the city council and the people in the city of Lakewood, I, Wendy Strom, Mayor of the city of Lakewood, Colorado, by virtue of the authority vested in me, do hereby proclaim March as, can you say it? Can you say that? Colorectal. Awareness Month. Thank you. Given under my hand and seal, the city of Lakewood this 25th day of March 2024.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Let the fun begin. All right, that was your education lesson tonight. So everybody go home and be healthy. All right, so then we move on to our first, we've got two presentations this evening. One, the first one will come from our Lakewood Advisory Commission, and I would like to note that we have, well, I hear we have a number of changing public comments on LakewoodSpeaks.org, so we'll speak to that for just a second. Lakewood Advisory Commission typically, you know, there is, they are the body that we as city council can actually say, hey, community members and volunteers for Lakewood Advisory Commission, we have an idea that we would love help getting research with. So the city council can send ideas to the LAC, we call it. The other way is that the LAC, the Lakewood Advisory Commission can come to us. They come up with ideas of things that they may like us to research, they bring it to city council, and that's what we're doing this evening. So the Lakewood Advisory Commission will be presenting on an idea that they have, that they are asking for city council commission or permission to move forward with doing research on. So can someone update me, how many public Lakewood Speaks comments do we have? We have 22, okay.
I have a point of order. The audience is not allowed to call for points of order that is not within our rules of decorum.
Mayor, I currently have 22 comments.
Okay, thank you very much. So typically on a Lakewood Speaks, or I'm sorry, an LAC idea, we don't usually do public comment, however, this one had a lot of community interest. So public comment was opened up on Lakewood Speaks today, or I'm sorry, it was open earlier than today. It's been open. We won't be taking public input here this evening live, however Lakewood Speaks is still open and available. We are still watching it. We will take a moment to look over those comments. I know as of this afternoon, we were still at eight, so we do have a pretty decent amount. So while we are reviewing, if anyone would like to make a comment on the LAC presentation, we'll go ahead and invite up Mr. Clifford, and you can get started on that presentation. And what we'll do once you're done is we'll look through those comments before we have our conversation.
There we go.
Thank you.
Hello. So this is, this is a grassroots proposal from the Civic Awareness Committee, and I have a couple of comments before I go through the slides. Number one, the person that wrote the proposal is out of town, so I'm filling in for the person that wrote this. So when it comes, if anybody has questions, some questions I could answer, some of them might not have the information, because I'm not the one that, there's a lot of facts and figures in here, I'm not sure what the sources are. And then the other thing, keep in mind that this is, this is a request to study this issue. There's not necessarily any conclusions. So I don't really have a position at this point, because we're not allowed to study it until we have approval to study it. So with that, I'd like to get started. And, and a grassroots proposal, by the way, is a, let me get closer to the mic. A grassroots proposal is a proposal that we have not been assigned. It was our idea. So the, the idea origin first developed when the state of court presentation revealed that over 99% of failure to appear warrants were cleared, meaning waived. And then questions are, why have a law that Lakewood doesn't enforce? Why should people with warrants come to court if you know that there are no repercussions for not appearing? This appears to be a cleanup of a law that is no longer needed. So that's, that's one aspect. With the start of the outreach course, the city manager announced how many warrants are cleared or forgiven each month. So what happens to the, to the original crime? Mostly, they're forgiven, and, and this does not include traffic violations. A lot of these crimes are deemed as low-level, necessary for survivor, survival, ineffectual penalty for homeless. Offenders have lack of options, so shouldn't, shouldn't be punished. Now, crimes that are often dismissed, and these probably don't include all of them, but these are examples. Having an open container of alcohol, sleeping in a public park, shoplifting, trespassing, simple assault, possession of drug paraphernalia, indecent exposure, which includes public urination, and then failure to impair in court, and panhandling, and one of the, one of the aspects of panhandling is the window washing thing. So these offenses are sometimes known as crimes of survival. They're already identified through the LEED program, which started in 2021. The LEED started in Seattle to assist homeless population. These crimes are, are most often the ones reported by residents at city council meetings, wondering why more isn't done. This shows that residents do not know the policy has changed. There is an opportunity to inform the public that Lakewood is, is trying to inform the public. I guess that doesn't show the whole slide. That Lakewood is trying to handle these things humanely. So the LEED program and outreach court, these are existing Lakewood programs that forgive, or divert, or dismiss low-level crimes. Municipal crimes are off, mostly low-level crimes, and then traffic offenses are not included. Programs offer individual, so, programs offer support for the individual, not necessarily, the public is not necessarily a stakeholder, given the appearance that Lakewood supports certain people that do not or cannot adhere to the law. That's the appearance that we get from it. Now selective enforcement is commonly referred to as the rule of man, not necessarily the rule of law. And my own definition of the rule of law is, it's a law that applies to everybody. You don't have, you don't apply it to the people that you like, and not apply it to the people you don't like, or, or vice versa. So it raises distrust with residents who are looking for enforcement, increases fear in people. They wonder if this time they will face punishment rather than diversion without letting people know that they are safe to pursue the survival in Lakewood. The programs are trying to help them lose effectiveness for increasing survival. And just a side note, I knocked on a lot of doors, not just last year, but the year before and two years before that. One of the things that people talk about, we ask them about their favorite issue, is they say, where is the law enforcement? And I hear stories and stories and stories of people who reported crimes, and they didn't, there was no response. That's not true in every situation, but you hear about it a lot. So preliminary research. Lakewood spends over $100,000 on these programs. Each crime has a different reason for dismissal, diversion, or de-prioritize. Shoplifting, for instance, some people say it's a crime of survival. Window washing, it's the First Amendment legal challenge. Lakewood is transitioning to new methods that focus on helping the individual. The LEED and outreach have no apparent personal benefits lasting over six months, and societal norms suffer. I mentioned earlier that the LEED program was started in Seattle. We do not want to be like Seattle. Can research provide basic alternatives? And these are some examples of trends in shoplifting. The chart on the left shows reported shoplifting and then total arrests. Shoplifting is supposedly a crime of survival. Fewer cases reported than five years ago. We don't really know if there's less shoplifting, but they're not, they're not being reported. And then arrest rate is growing at a bigger, bigger gap. 25% less shoplifting reported than five years ago, and 57% less arrests than in 2018. And I've asked a lot of people about this. I've been told, for instance, the grocery store I go to has a security guard. I'm told the, the security guard is there for show, to discourage people from shoplifting, but I don't know if, if they're catching people that are doing it or not. You know, you hear different things. There was, there was the one person who was fired from his job for following somebody to their car after a shoplifting incident. Window washing, the most recent crime to draw attention for lack of enforcement. We have a municipal code 12.18.020, which prohibits soliciting businesses from vehicles. And obviously, this, the reason for this municipal code is a safety factor. It's not enforced due to free speech concerns, apparently. Clear example of having a law on record, but not enforced, raises confusion in some residents and emboldens others. Now the research options. The data for whether Lakewood programs are effective or not already exists in other cities. Criminalizing homelessness does not solve homelessness. Is the point of law enforcement to solve homelessness? Is just, is the justice system being used as social workers? What are the effects on society as a whole when the focus shifts to helping the individual rather than enforcing society's laws? Is there a better way to help the individual and still preserve the rule of law? Research options. And that, one, one option, if, if a law is not being enforced, remove the law for everybody. In other words, it puts everybody on equal footing, removes the fear of breaking the law for those that need to, eliminates the cost of using high-cost judges and lawyers as social workers, eliminates residents calling for crimes that burden the police and the court. Another option is mean test laws. And I guess that's the last one. I can't read the bottom. Establish a threshold of income, housing, or past history, which would remove fear and uncertainty for those trying to survive. And obviously, there's one thing missing here, and that is to enforce the, the law that is, is in existence for everybody, no matter what their situation is. So like I said, this is So, like I said, this is, this is an issue to study. Um, our, this particular committee is pretty diverse. Not everybody agrees. So, I'm not sure what the outcome would be if we studied this, but I think it's worth studying it. So, I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Clifford. And I apologize, I jumped in and bringing you up and I didn't actually introduce you as one of our volunteers on the Lakewood Advisory Commission in our Civic Awareness Committee. So, thank you very much. Um, Mr. Clifford, if you'll stay up here, we may have some council questions.
Okay.
Uh, do we, why don't we take just a couple of minutes? We'll go through, um, everybody, if you could take a minute to look at the, uh, public comments and then if you'll hang tight and we'll, any questions we have. I know we have, uh, three counselors right now ready to speak. Okay, Mayor Protem Sharazai.
Yes, thank you. Mr. Clifford, you stated at the start of this that you didn't have an opinion on this, but I guess I would, it's really clear with the other LAC research topics that there's a hypothesis we're trying to get to. And I guess I would like to better understand what is this all predicated on? Like, you have a lot of questions in here that you could answer, so it would be hard for us to make a decision on that. But I'd love to hear from you, having experience with you recently running for office and knowing some of the values you have for our community. What is it that you're trying to gain from this research?
Well, number one is to eliminate confusion and to find out if there's a better way than what we're doing now. Um, and per, me personally, I like enforcement. I found, I've met people, I, I'm not, I'm not sure if I've known intimately, people who have been offenders. And generally, somebody gets to a point where they get a wake-up call. And a lot of times, that's from being arrested. Um, I knew, I worked with a person who, who did the same thing over and over again. He started out in county jail and then he went to state prison. Once he went to state prison, he said, okay, that's it. I'm not going to do this anymore. So, a lot of times, there is a wake-up call. So, I think sometimes it's in the best interest of the offender to get a wake-up call like that. It doesn't happen in every situation. Sometimes it, it happens on their own. So, I'm, I'm highly in favor of the wake-up call. Um, does that answer your question?
Yeah, it, it does, and I really appreciate that because I think that gets to the crux of what we're trying to do here. And I think you and members of your, uh, committee are really trying to highlight a lack of enforcement. And so, to be frank, I'm disappointed that we would take this option to have that conversation. I think there's other ways to do this. I think the point of what you all are trying to accomplish tonight is to really highlight some ways that our law enforcement maybe lacks capacity to do all the things that we hope for them to do. Um, you know, you spoke a little bit about what you heard on doors, and I've had the opportunity to hear from you quite a bit over the last year with your experience running for the Ward One seat. Uh, you talked a lot about public safety, and that's reflected in the Lakewood Speaks comments. There's 22 comments, all of them unanimously in favor of us keeping public safety. So, for the research to be premised on perhaps we eliminate these laws, I don't think is the direction we need to go to. And it doesn't sound like it's the direction you want to go to. It sounds like you're looking for more enforcement. But I also remember you talking, uh, during the campaign about wanting to eliminate programs that don't impact everyone. And for me, I think that's really what this is about. It's about getting rid of some of the creative ways that we're serving some of our most vulnerable in the community, highlighting the cost that that has, when ultimately, I think it has a positive impact on us. So, I think that's it for me. I'll be a no on this vote for those reasons, and I hope that we can see the LAC's Diversity Committee, uh, doing more work to advance our community in positive ways.
Counselor Mayor Guerrero.
Thank you. Um, I do want to just echo a point of my co-counselor here, Sharazai, uh, around the idea that I, I also am feeling just like the, the premise within the, the packet, um, of what this study is for reads a little bit more like, if we're not having universal enforcement and we're doing all of these other things, then we want to study if that's effective. We want to study if those are, like diversion programs are where we should be investing instead. Um, but then in this presentation, it seems very clear that that is not really the agenda. And that feels a little bit disingenuous to me, but can you just talk a, a little bit more about why the, there's such a discrepancy between, um, some of the aspects of what's in the packet and the, the conversation this evening?
So, I'm, I'm not sure what, what discrepancies are you talking about? Um, could you be a little bit more clear? I'm sorry.
Yes. Um, so, the, the premise within sort of the beginning of your presentation as well is this idea around, um, crimes of survival and recognizing that there are times when some of the crimes you listed are due to extreme circumstances where people are breaking the law because there's a lack of other options versus as we continued the, the presentation, it's very clear that, um, that this question isn't being asked due to wanting to give different options instead of breaking the law, but actually just to try to expose that we're not enforcing these things universally. And I will say, one of the core, one of the core concepts of the way that the criminal justice system works with, with judges and juries is that there is a level of, uh, of discernment, of personal discernment from a judge. And so, I also think that without any input or information for me from either the Police Department of Lakewood or from our municipal judges, I, I, I sit on the Judges' Salary Committee, and so I get updates about these programs and how they're working, but the idea that things are universally enforced or the punishments are universal isn't actually how any parts of our criminal law works. And so, I guess I'm curious about sort of that first premise of laws of survival, recognizing that there's these moments where people are up against a corner and they break the law sort of without as much choice as some of the rest of us versus by the end of it, sort of, it felt like you were just trying to expose that they're not universally enforced. Can you talk to me about those, those differences of the, of the perspectives or the pitches within this?
Well, I recognize that in the criminal justice system, and I'm certainly not an expert, um, there is some flexibility with, with the prosecutors, with the arresting officers, with the judges, and, but it's based on a lot, a lot of criteria, a lot more criteria than what group somebody's in. In other words, if somebody, it's, somebody is doing their third or fourth offense, it's much more serious than somebody that's doing their, their first offense. So, there is some flexibility, and I reckon, that, I, I recognize that that flexibility should exist. And I, but I think the, one of the reasons for this study and one of the reasons for bringing it up is to recognize the, the fact that, um, that what we're doing right now is not working. That there are, for example, the failure to appear is not being enforced. And one of the questions proposed was, why wouldn't anybody appear if it's going to be waived once they don't appear? So, you know, there's a lot of problems like that. Does that answer your questions?
Yeah, that's very helpful. And then I, I don't think that we have the right person on staff, but I think for me, one of my biggest concerns and is that I, I'm not, I think that the, the overall, the overall premise, like these overall questions that says that we need to find out whether or not we should keep these laws on the books. I, I'm, I don't believe that we don't ever charge people, pick up people, or, uh, have, have any type of consequence for any of these crimes that are listed. I feel really hesitant to want to sort of encroach into that space without, again, without any real input particularly from our police force. And I think that our police force is doing an incredible job balancing really difficult, changing circumstances within our city and are working very hard to recommend and figure out their staffing challenges, to figure out how to, again, address some of these crimes in ways that prevent their, uh, can, like, uh, recidivism of them and that cycle. Um, but that also, then I think there's some questions of upstream questions. And I also know that these crimes of survival, as is said here, are often used in other types of cases where, um, they're one in a long list of potentially violent behavior, but they are the types of things that are public and so we can, um, then get, have an ability to put out a warrant or to pick people up. So, I don't have a great understanding and expertise about how our police do every aspect of their job, but for me, this sort of premise of this question feels like not accurate to what is actually happening. And I also want to encourage that people who are calling the police repeatedly, uh, on emergencies are not getting response to definitely reach out. I know that we have occasionally had that problem. We're working on, and the police are, are great partners in working on creating the, uh, sort of the community responsiveness and the community communication that, that is needed at this time, that is, is a difficult time and a changing time in how policing is working. Um, so with that, I will be a no, but thank you so much for your time.
Counselor over.
Okay, Fred, uh, first of all, I'd like to thank you for, you know, volunteering your time to work for, for Lakewood gratis, really, uh, and to come in here and spend the time on the LAC. And by the way, the LAC always needs more members.
Here, here.
Always. So, yeah, we appreciate you coming down here. Um, I'd have to point out, I stopped today at, at Walmart, both Walmarts on Wadsworth. And, um, what I found was they have closed all their self-checkout lanes. And so, I asked the manager, why did they do that? And the answer is because of shoplifting. And so, something's going on there that wasn't going on a couple of years ago, or I don't, I don't know when they closed it, but recently. And so, I, I'm not up for taking any of our laws off the books, but something is, it's not working. What's going on right now is definitely not working when our businesses have spent all that money, there must be 20 self-checkout lanes at, at Walmart on Colfax and Wadsworth. And so, they, they kept putting in more and more and more self-checkout lanes, and then suddenly they changed. So, there's been a sea change or something going on. So, I'd be really interested in, in the LAC researching what has worked in other cities and other communities, other municipalities, or whatever. Uh, I wouldn't be interested in this particular proposal, but do you know, if we like said yes, could you go back and expand what you're looking at or what the LAC is looking at? Or is it narrowly defined right now by this, the terminology on the proposal?
That's a good question. Um, I'm not, I'm not sure what the rules are, but, um, like I said earlier, this, the idea behind this is to study it. And we mentioned something about law, somebody mentioned something about law enforcement. That's one of the, the best sources to ask is what's going on with law enforcement. Um, so, I, as, as far as I'm concerned, it could be expanded. I mean, that's, that's one, in looking at some of the other projects that have gone through, I've, I've only been on this commission for about a year, looking for, looking at some of the other projects, that's one of the things they've always studied is what other cities are doing. And, uh, sometimes, sometimes I think you look at what other city is doing, it's probably not a good idea, but that's one of the things that always comes up. Does that answer your question?
Yeah. Um, who's the liaison? Who's the staff liaison? Is it Mr. Rob? Do you know if, uh, if we approved this particular language, can they then go back and expand their research into other things? I mean, into similar things?
Well, um, from past examples, for, um, like then Counselor Strom, you know, brought a proposal forward to look at, um, speed and safety. And through council's discussion, it provided better parameters
Right.
for what the LAC should look into and research. And, um, you know, council discussed some items that you did not want them to look into. For example, roundabouts, I think was, was one, one point that was raised. So, the discussion does help the, the LAC, you know,
Okay.
put some
Right. Yeah, I can think of a couple of examples myself right now. Um, so, yeah, I think I'll vote yes, um, under the caveat that we're not going to look at removing the laws we already have, but, um, I would charge you with researching what might work somewhere else, or what does work. Find someplace where it does work, where we can reduce crime, we can reduce shoplifting and, and our businesses aren't living in fear of shoplifters, et cetera.
Can I, can I respond? Um, and like I said at the very beginning, this is a grassroots proposal. And what makes it a grassroots proposal is we did not get an assignment. And when, when city council gives a committee a particular assignment, there are parameters, and this is what you're supposed to study. So, with a grassroots proposal, it's a little bit different than a, than a particular assignment. So, I, if we were to move forward, I, I can't see a reason why not to have some direction from, from council.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Sinks.
Thank you. So, um, I wrote down some quotes, and, um, first of all, the quote that we've all heard of, don't throw the baby out with the bathwater. And so, a quote that I have, um, from your presentation, offenders have a lack of options, so they shouldn't be punished. Another quote, um, removes the fear of breaking the law for those that need to. So, again, removing the laws. And in my opinion, that is throwing the baby out with the bathwater. And also, in my opinion, having served on the LAC, um, what we would do is very narrowly defined, um, we would define the project and give you the direction, not just free, you know, free to do anything that's related to this, but you've given us this presentation, and that's what we have to go by. And so, therefore, I would vote no because I, I don't like the premise of throwing the baby out with the bathwater, let's get rid of the rules, you know, because there are people that can't meet them. You know, we have, um, an outreach court that's a little over a year, and, um, I think it's great to have some fear that people are driven to, oh, I better go to outreach court, and then I can be forgiven if I get an ID or something like that. So, I'm, I'm not going to vote yes because of all these parameters that you've given, the premise that, um, I feel is very weak. And, um, so, thank you for your time, though.
And, and thank you for your time serving on LAC.
Counselor Stewart.
Thank you. I have very similar concerns to many of my colleagues on the rest of council. As I read through this proposal, it feels, um, just like a whole bunch of kind of cognitive dissonance and contradictions. It does not make a ton of sense to me to propose a, a project that says people are breaking the law and we're not enforcing it well enough, so let's get rid of the law. Doesn't make a ton of sense to me. And, uh, to one of my colleague's points, feels somewhat disingenuous, quite frankly. And I'm a little bit disappointed, um, to another colleague's point, that there was no real hypothesis in this proposal. It just, um, kind of felt like throwing something at a wall to seeing what, and seeing what sticks. Um, and I have a great deal of respect for the LAC and members like yourself and all of the work that you do to really move forward, really thoughtful, well-researched policy ideas to then bring to council. And this, I'm going to be totally honest, does not feel like one of them. Um, so, I'm a little bit disappointed that we're here discussing this today. Um, when, uh, talking about things like, um, failure to appear, I know that our Community Outreach Court is actually there to try and mitigate some of those failure to appear issues by actually meeting people where they're at, which I think is pretty incredible. And the idea of studying what other cities are doing in this space, well, actually, other cities are doing what we're doing because the Community Outreach Court is incredibly innovative. Um, and I would just love to really quickly hear from staff if you have any details about the Community Outreach Court. There's a whole bunch of information on the Lakewood website, but I'm curious, um, how many people, uh, are actually attending the Outreach Court right now?
Um, so, thank you. I can try to answer those, a few of those questions. So, the Outreach Court right now is at Mount Air Church, 1390 Benton Street. It started, its first court date was December 1st of 2022. At that time, I think I remember we had eight people who came to, in front of the, um, court individuals. Now, our last session, this is held once a month, and our last a month, and our last session served 44 individuals. And the program's really grown, and I need to take just a moment to brag about our presiding judge, because this was her idea. I remember a couple of years ago, she and the then-police chief, Dan McCaskey, came and asked me if I would consider a new concept. And that was, sometimes it's hard to get individuals to come to the police station and to court for some of this, like failure to appear, or some of these lower-level infractions. And she said, what do you think of the idea if we went out into the community where a lot of this population is, and make it as friendly as we can, so that we can help people move along in their lives, and to move the needle, and to help them toward finding maybe housing and jobs, et cetera? So it has been wildly successful. I can tell you that many cities are copying us again, because it really is an innovative idea. But this is all Judge Bozart's. This is her concept. So we had, at this last court date, we had about 44 individuals. But more importantly, I'd like to tell you about the nonprofit partners who have joined us in court. We now have Metro Carrying, who brings, and this is all volunteer. I'm not sure where the over $100,000 number came from. This is just our normal court costs. We're just doing that on a different, in a different place. And all of these partners are volunteer partners. So we have Metro Carrying who shows up and gives vouchers for the DMV. They give IDs on the spot, talk about, give housing information, food bank information, veteran services. We also have Jefferson Center for Mental Health, who helps these individuals with mental health evaluations and treatment, mental health services, et cetera. We have the DMV there to help issue IDs on the site. When people have IDs, it's, that's very powerful. Then they can, then they can apply for jobs, they can apply for housing. They also offer permits, driver's licenses, et cetera. Bayard Industries, who you're very familiar with, Bayard Enterprises, I always say that wrong, they help with services like laundry, employment opportunities, job training, resume writing. We also have the Community Connection Center, who provide blankets, hand warmers, bus passes, hygiene kits, and on and on. Asset Health joins us, Benefits in Action, West Metro Fire, Mile High Behavioral Health, et cetera. So again, we've seen enormous success. And they applied for a grant through Colorado Gives and received $25,000. $5,000 of that $25,000 goes to help individuals apply for housing. Applications for housing, there's a cost associated with it, and some people can't afford that. So out of that $5,000 grant that isn't city dollars, that's from Colorado Gives, we, the court spokes, actually help people apply and pay for their housing application. So I just want to make sure we give a big recognition to our judge. Yeah. So is that enough information? I just happened to call, call this up real quick before the meeting.
Thank you. Yeah, that's very helpful and appreciated. So I guess the point I would make is that was a thoughtful and well-stakeholder solution that actually engaged our law enforcement and our community court in trying to solve for some of these issues that were brought up in this proposal. And those are the types of proposals that I would like to see coming forward. So I will be a no on this.
Counselor Cruz.
Thank you. And I do want to thank you, Mr. Clifford, for coming in here today. And I know that presenting a presentation that somebody else made is not always the easiest task. So just thank you for coming in. Thank you for answering all of our questions. I don't have a ton to add from what other folks have said, but I do just want to, just want to note, right, I was kind of excited when there was this idea of the Civic Awareness Committee coming up with a grassroots proposal. I'm really excited for what our, you know, very qualified volunteers and the Lakewood Advisory Commission want us to learn more about. But I think from looking at the charge of the committee of promoting civic responsibility and participation through education to create a more connected citizenry, I don't necessarily see that goal reflected in this specific proposal. And particularly, you know, at a time when we have, I think, increasing voter turnout, but there's still so much, so much to go, to have a truly connected Lakewood that includes everybody, in which everybody is sharing their diverse opinions. That is the kind of work that I would be really excited to see from the Civic Awareness Committee. And so with that, I will respectfully be a no on this proposal, but do thank you for your time.
Counselor Lowe.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Clifford. Thank you for coming and giving us your time today and the work you've done. I will also be a no. I just want to echo what a lot of other counselors have already said on this topic. You know, this presentation does call to mind the, sort of the moment from, I think it's The Hitchhiker's Guide, The Guide to the Galaxy, where they ask, what's the meaning of life? The answer to life, the universe, and everything, and the answer is 42. I don't know what the answer to life, the universe, and everything is, but it's not 42. And I think the solution to how we sort of solve the intractable challenges around housing, homelessness, rising crime, shoplifting, affordable housing are incredibly complicated. But I think one thing we all agree on, including it sounds like you, is that getting rid of some of these low-level offenses is not necessarily the right approach. Right? I mean, as, as we've already heard from Ms. Hodgson, I always chip over the G. I'm sorry, Ms. Hodgson. The outreach court is, is doing good work in our community, and, you know, these, these lower-level offenses are a part of what actually, frankly, allows a pathway to get some of these folks in front of the outreach court. I mean, one thing that came when I was digging into this a little bit more, that I certainly want to learn more about before we, we approve this assignment, is, you know, one of the things you've named is, is the trespassing charge. Well, I mean, I'm a little concerned about, you know, for instance, like when folks are in a domestic violence dispute, and they get a restraining order, like what would be the implications of doing away with trespassing? Would that take away an important tool that our law enforcement have to help keep spouses safe from, from domestic abuse? So, I mean, those are the sort of questions that, that do bother me about this approach. I, what, rather than talking about, about this, this idea of doing away with, with these survival crimes, which I think there's actually quite a bit of consensus from a bunch of folks, including it sounds like your subcommittee, actually might not be the right approach. I, I think our time would be better served digging into these really complicated challenges around how do we prevent crime? How do we address systematic homelessness? I think council and the city have taken some really important steps on that. I think there's a lot more we can and should do around long-term permanent supportive housing, around investing in services that, that prevent eviction and reduce homelessness, or around investing in evidence-based programs that reduce crime, right? Like, so I think those are the conversations that we need to be having, and figuring out, we, we need to think carefully and thoughtfully about the process for that, right? I think some of that is staff-driven. I'm certainly not opposed to giving our thoughtful researchers on the LAC pieces of that assignment, but I just think we need to be more thoughtful about how we do it than, than tossing this question to the subcommittee at this particular time. So I will be a no vote. I do hope that in future meetings and study sessions, we'll have a chance to dig more into how do we really build on these challenges? How do we prevent shoplifting? How do we prevent petty crime? How do we help small businesses thrive? And how do we prevent homelessness? Those are top priority questions that I want council to tackle, and I'm very committed to, to working on, on council over the next year and a half.
Counselor Ryan.
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you for the presentation, although I'm a little bit confused, because the topic says, "Research the effect of eliminating low-level Lakewood ordinance violations that are commonly referred to as crimes against homelessness or survival crimes." That's the topic that you...
That's the topic that you have asked to research. And it's a specific topic. When we, when we, the city council, send things to Lakewood Advisory Committee, it's a very specific topic. You're asking to research a very specific topic. It's, one of my counselors said, "I'm not in favor of removing laws on the books," but that's the only topic that's really being proposed at this time. And frankly, I reject the idea that our police department is doing a bad job. If it's doing, if it could do a better job, maybe it needs more resources. As Counselor Lowe mentioned, maybe we need to have more study sessions on how we can help our, our police force and our business community prevent some of these crimes. But I'm not, I also reject the premise that we should, in order to help the police, remove the very tools that can help them. And so I am not in favor of this proposal. I don't think it's the direction that I want to see the city. It's not the direction that the people who are kind enough to open their doors and talk to me said that that's what they want, and that's what they value. I hear from you that that's not a value that, that you share either. And so I, I'm a strong no on this. I want to see things from the Lakewood Advisory Commission. It is a valuable thing. And as my co-counsel, my co-counselor in Ward Four said, I encourage more and more people to apply for positions. We certainly need more geographical diversity and more diversity in general on the Lakewood Advisory Commission, so I'd like to see it. But this is not that topic. So I'll be a no.
Counselor Labure.
Thank you, Mayor. Just to sort of piggyback on what some of my other counselors have said, you know, I worked at the Denver Police Department for seven years, and I can tell you Lakewood's Police Department is very well-respected, both in the region, and in the state, and nationally. So, and I've also spent a lot of time thinking about policing from a data standpoint. I spent a lot of time doing coding on our national incidents-based reporting system, NiBRS, and working on Denver's data over the years. And I think, when I think about policing, I think we should be thinking about it, you know, from that perspective, and making sure that when we're talking about it, we're talking about it grounded in, in what the actual data is telling us. And so that's something, when these proposals come up, I'll always be looking for. But I do think we have a lot of different codes on the books. And as some of my other counselors have said, I think that gives police more tools in their toolbox to be more effective in their jobs. So, and I'll also say that Lakewood's pretty well policed. You know, in my time, when I was on council before, in four years, almost the only staff increases we had were to our police department. So we continue to add to our roles and add to our force. And I think we're not going to be able to police our way out of a lot of the problems and the challenges that we're facing. So we've got to find new strategies to help our police department, to make sure that they're not spending their time on sort of low-level crimes, and that they're really focusing on the real important challenges. And just to add to that, I did a little research while we were sitting here. You know, we have about 400 FTEs in the police department. We spend, or about, I think this year, $58 million, almost $60 million, we're going to spend on our police department. And what I think we should be doing as a council is looking to our leadership, looking to our city manager and our police chief, and saying, you know, we want to support you, and whatever you all need, and the tools that you need, we want to give you the resources as a council, as a body, to make sure that you can be as effective as you can. And if there are laws and things that need to change that would help you be more successful, we want to support you in that. And that's sort of the approach I come at this with. And so with that, I think I would oppose this today, but that doesn't mean that as a body, we shouldn't be thinking about new strategies and ways to be more effective in policing. So, thanks.
Before we hand it off to our first speaker of our second round, I will, again, I want to say thank you and to all of your colleagues on the LAC for the work that you put into not only this initiative, but all the others that you guys have worked on. I too am a no on this, from the perspective that I, I can't imagine telling a voter that we said we're going to get rid of consequences to crime. That is just not something that I'm hearing with any degree of consistency from our residents in Lakewood. And however, I will highlight that, you know, we have, over the last years on council, started to really roll out, roll out some of the innovative programs that have been very much on the side of addressing the homelessness challenge, but also on the crime prevention challenge, too. And my hope is that as we, you know, as Counselor Labure mentioned, like continuing to work together and find innovative ideas, that we will continue to be able to move that dial, so that we're able to address some of these survival crimes, that I'll be honest, a lot of them do happen for our residents up and down Colfax, our residents up and down Sheridan and Alameda, and then in wards like four and five, where it does, it gets frustrating sometimes when we don't feel like we can hear, we're hears quickly enough from the police department. We are working on that. We know that that's a challenge, and it's something that I think everybody on the dais up here is aware of. So we'll keep working on it, and would hope that you would continue to work to bring good ideas to us that might move us in that direction, that we can continue to improve public safety and address homelessness altogether in the community. With that, we have one more hand up, and that's Counselor over.
Thank you, Mayor. Fred, I think it's a no. But I'm going to keep my, I'm going to stay yes. But again, I just wanted to clarify that not for what you're proposing. But give me credit, that you've identified, LAC has identified a problem, and you've come up with a solution. It's not the right solution, and I think everybody here agrees with that, including me. But I would, I'm going to stay yes, so, because I want you to, the LAC, to stay on this problem. You've identified, you know, a problem, and go back and look for solutions, other solutions, not this one. And let's see. Oh, one of the reasons is that we sent a turf replacement issue to the LAC a year ago, a year and a half ago. And, and then the city's sustainability department pretty much co-opted that, changed it into all about water, sustainability, and everything else. And at the end, I don't even think there was anything at all about turf replacement. So that's kind of why I'm a yes, because I think you can change it, and I would like to give you, you know, go get them, an attitude. And, you know, drop this, but go get them. All right, thanks.
Okay. And one more mention about Lakewood Speaks for anybody in the room that would like to make a comment on this. I'll note that Lakewood Speaks was not correctly updating today, so while we have been reviewing comments, it does not reflect as such on the website. So many of them, if not all of them, still look like they've been unread. We are aware of that, and we are in the process of addressing that with our very smart IT folks. So with that, do we have a formal vote? Not really a formal vote, but do we, I guess, let's go ahead and get it on the record. So a vote yes would be move forward LAC Civic Awareness Committee with this topic of research. A vote no would be please don't move forward. All right. And with that, we have 10 nays and one yea, and the nays being Strom, Mayor Guerrero, Stewart, Ryan, Sharizai, Labure, Nystrom, Lowe, Cruz, and Sinks.
Can I sit down?
Thank you, Mr. Clifford.
Thank you for your time.
I know that was not easy. Thank you very much for your time and your work on that. And then with that, we have our second staff presentation this evening, and that would be the comprehensive plan. I'll note that we have one, one comment still on Lakewood Speaks. We have no, do we have a staff presentation? Mr. Parker's not here this evening. I'll go ahead and welcome up Mr. Roger Waddenall, our planning manager, and Kristy Ivanov, senior planner, to introduce this item and give our presentation.
Thank you. We'll give a brief presentation. I know that it was on Lakewood Speaks. Again, Roger Waddenall, comprehensive planning manager, and really here to give council an update on the comprehensive plan development process. You all probably are pretty aware of what a comprehensive plan is and does, but I'll just kind of give a quick overview. It is, a comprehensive plan is a vision with implementation steps for the city. And typically, that looks 10 to 15 years into the future, and it's really a framework that staff and council use to make decisions on things like land use, housing, transportation, climate equity, and a number of other topics. And it's advisory, just to kind of repeat the obvious. It's not regulatory, but it really has a lot of influence in terms of a lot of the decision-making that comes about, like in terms of all these topics that talked about. For example, any land use proposal that comes to council, say for a rezoning, would need to comply with a comprehensive plan, and that, that's just part of the process. City receives, especially in the last several years, a number of grand... City receives, especially in the last several years, a number of grants from the state and federal. Having something in the comprehensive plan or policy or in one of the plans related to the sub-plans can support grants substantially. It informs zoning ordinance in terms of any kind of rewrite or updates to the zoning ordinance, and that may occur in the future as well, so the comprehensive plan can provide direction and really provide what the city wants to see as a community as far as beyond land use. Like I said, beyond land use, transportation, public health, and a number of other issues. Go to the next slide. Typically, the comprehensive plan, or they have a window of about 10 years to 15 years. These are previous comprehensive plans. You can kind of see by the dates that they're approximately 10 to 15 years apart. Our last comprehensive plan was adopted in 2015, and we're almost at 10 years out. And if we go to the next slide, you could just see a lot has changed. I think it's pretty self-evident. So many things are different in the community, in the state, in the metro area. So the kind of the, the issues in front of the community are so much different, or many are similar, but there are so many new issues, as well as some of the issues are more predominant. I think, you know, not going to go through all the list. But here is an opportunity within the comprehensive plan to make a thoughtful approach to addressing issues. And as the community changes, as the environment changes, the comprehensive plan needs to be up to date. So with that, I'll turn it over to Kristi to talk a little bit more in detail on the process and where we're at right now. Thanks.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. My name is Kristi Ivanov, and I'm a Senior Planner within the Comprehensive Planning and Research Division. We have an exciting year ahead of us to develop our next comprehensive plan, and I'm here tonight to share some details and some updates about the process, which is called Envision Lakewood 2040. The process includes four phases. I will share more details about each phase in the following slides, but here's a quick overview. The first phase, Plan for the Plan, started in November 2022 and was just completed last December. We just kicked off the public process, Phase Two, in January, and it will continue through early 2025. By the end of this second phase, the goal is to have a draft of the comprehensive plan ready to begin the review and adoption process, which will occur during Phase Three. The fourth phase is about implementing the plan and will continue through the lifespan of the plan. So here's more details about each phase. The first phase focused on planning for the plan, which included an internal kickoff to reflect on the previous comprehensive plan and discuss ways this next comprehensive plan can be a useful and relevant citywide tool. We also worked with a consultant to help with several pre-planning tasks, including researching best practices, creating a public engagement approach, providing recommendations to the plan organization and implementation framework. The project website was also created on Lakewood Together. This will be the digital information and participation hub throughout the process. And the website is lakewood.org/EnvisionLakewood2040. As part of this first phase, we also hosted an informational open house for City Council and Planning Commission last August to introduce this upcoming process. Phase Two started in January and kicked off the public engagement process to develop the content of the plan. And here's a closer look at this current phase, Phase Two. So since January, we've been focusing on hearing from as many community members as possible about their vision, values, and concerns for Lakewood's future. This spring, we will be transitioning the focus from visioning and issue identification into problem-solving and brainstorming solutions. And then later this year, we'll bring it all together into a draft plan. Throughout this year, there will be several ways to participate and provide input, including surveys, online activities, meetings, events, advisory groups, and focus groups. The first activity was a four-question survey in English and Spanish that was open from January 12th through February 29th. There were online and paper versions of the survey available in both English and Spanish. And these are the four questions. One of the big engagement goals for the project is to hear from as many people as possible in Lakewood, especially those who do not participate usually. So with that in mind, a prepaid postcard version of the survey and information about the project was included with the January edition of Looking at Lakewood in both English and Spanish, shown here on the slide. This was mailed to every household in Lakewood, which is approximately 85,000 addresses. The survey closed on February 29th, and we received approximately 2,000 responses. The results will be posted on the project website later this month. Also, to spread the word about the project, we distributed posters and postcards throughout the city. So in the first two months of kicking off the public process between January and February, here are some engagement numbers so far. As I mentioned, we mailed 85,000 postcards to every household with Looking at Lakewood. We received about 2,000 survey responses. We've attended about 10 community meetings and events, and we've spoken with about 300 community members so far. So what have we heard so far? Many residents have shared that they love Lakewood's proximity to the mountains, access to beautiful parks and open space, and community, including friends and family. We've also heard concerns about affordability, homelessness, public safety, air quality, safer transportation infrastructure, housing, and sustainability. The image shown here on the slide is a word cloud of the big themes that we've heard so far from this three-word visioning and issue identification activity that we've done at meetings. So those were some initial updates on Phase Two, and as I mentioned, Phase Two will continue throughout the rest of this year. On this slide here, back to the overall timeline and the four phases, the timing and details for Phase Three will depend a lot on the information and progress made the rest of this year, but the goal is to have a draft plan ready to begin the review and adoption process in mid-2025. And then Phase Four will be all about implementing the plan and tracking our progress. So here's the four phases again. So that was a lot of information. So what's happening next in the next couple of months? The Vision and Value Survey results will be posted on the website very soon. And as part of the next phase, as I mentioned, advisory groups will be formed to brainstorm solutions to the concerns and challenges the community identified through the survey and the other engagement activities during this first phase. And they will also help draft the goals and strategies that will be part of the draft comprehensive plan. An application process to participate on the advisory groups will be available very soon, and all interested community members are encouraged to apply. And everything will be on the website, lakewood.org/EnvisionLakewood2040. That concludes the presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. And first question, Mayor Protam Sharazai.
Yes, thank you for this presentation. This is really helpful. I'm one of the last wards, I think, to not have you join us, but that is in the work. So we're looking forward to that conversation. I have a few questions. Why 15 years this round and not 10? I wanted to understand that thinking.
I'm happy to. Thank you. I can jump in first. So that has been a question we've received from a lot of community members. Staff is proposing 15 right now, but that may change as we get through, get into the advisory groups. We might, through the discussions, decide that 10 is more realistic. I think part of it is that the comprehensive plan really looks far into the future, and a lot of these goals are very long-term. And it does take, another piece of it is that it does take two to three years to develop the comprehensive plan. And so right now, we're focusing our attention on developing this next comprehensive plan, and it's not even 2025 yet, which is the end of the last comprehensive plan. So that does factor into it. Does that help answer the question?
Yeah, thank you. I wanted to ask a little bit about the engagement. So in the last comprehensive plan, it's my understanding we had about 230 engagement activities to help inform that process. And I think you all have put together a really thoughtful plan with lots of opportunities. But I'd love to just encourage us to think about maybe some lessons learned from the housing plan. It was really slanted towards single-family homes, and I'd love to see you at the sports fields on the weekends, like all of the places where young families are, faith-based activation, including the mosque that's in Lakewood that often is overlooked and that. And so I think there's a lot of ways for us to increase the diverse views that are included in this. And so we saw, I've heard from one community member in particular about a taco party that Edgewater had in their park, and they'd love to see more like that, like, you know, meeting people where they are, these open house events, attending ward meetings even, or going to your neighborhood association. That continues to attract the same sort of activated community member, and there's more voices than that. And so I'd love to just encourage some thinking there. So that was more of a comment. And then for the advisory groups, I wanted to understand, is that something that we've thought about what that process is for including those people? Is that something that potentially the screening committee could have responsibility? And I'd love to just understand what we're thinking for that.
Well, to touch on that, it's going to be a challenge to get, the three advisory committees are being, groups are being set up to kind of address the range of topics. We were expecting quite a bit of interest. We'll see with the application process, but we also want the application process to come up with committees that reflect the entire community and not just, well, you know, just put in the most applications. So it's part of the criteria is to really create these committees that probably have around 15 community members. It could be residents, business owners, and things like that, some staff to support and maybe some experts if we need them for transportation, for example. But the idea is to really create some balanced, each committee should be, should be balanced and reflect the entire community. So that's where the application process will help, hopefully will help us get there. But that's the intent in recognizing that if you have 15 people, you know, you're not going to be able to have everyone on the committee, because we want the committees to be of a size that they're workable, you know? And we kind of thought that would be a workable number with staff support to really have some good conversations about these issues. So that's the intent. I don't know if I answered your question completely, but that's what we're trying to get, a balanced composition for these committees.
Counselor Sinks.
To piggyback on Counselor Sharazai's, the outreach, and so I attended one with South of Sixth Sustainability Neighborhood Group. And I would just like to encourage you to, and maybe you've already done this, and that is to reach out to the broader neighborhood associations like IBER and Applewood Valley. And I don't know if you are tuned in to their annual meetings and just can piggyback off on that. I see you shaking your head. Do you want to speak to that?
Are you referring to IBER? To the IBER neighborhood?
Both, and Applewood as well. So all of the neighborhood groups, if you could reach out to them and know that, so...
Yes, we are scheduled for IBER's annual meeting on, I think it's April 18th.
And then how about the others? Are you reaching out to Applewood, for example?
Yeah, we are going to be reaching out to the rest of the neighborhood orgs very soon.
Great, thank you.
And Two Creeks, I think, was already...
Two.
Yes, we did, we did join the Two Creeks meeting, yeah, in March.
Those are all our questions.
You stop? Okay.
Counselor Ryan.
Just a quick question. If there is a community organization that would like you to appear or make a request, I know you can't appear everywhere, how do they get in touch with you to find out how they...
On our website, you can go to Ask a Question form right now and just go ahead and type in that you're wanting to request us to come to one of your meetings. We will also have a button or a form that you can fill out to actually request a meeting too. It's just there's capacity, you know, is also a big thing too.
Sure. I didn't see the form, so I wanted to get clarity. Thank you.
Yes.
And you also can contact staff directly too, you know, Kristi or myself or other staff, and we can, obviously, we have, resources are somewhat limited, but the whole idea is to reach out to as many organizations and to meet people where they are, where they're at, at events. So as much as we can do that, that's the intent.
Counselor Lo.
Thanks for the presentation, and thanks for all the work you're doing on this. In addition to the neighborhood associations, is there an effort perhaps to reach out to the smaller HOAs? I know we've got quite a few, for instance, in Ward Three. I wonder if there's, it could be a little harder to gather them up and communicate with them, but is there an effort being made to pass these materials on to each, as many HOA leaders as possible?
Yes, that will be upcoming.
Great, thank you.
Counselor Cruz.
Yeah, my question slash statement was going to be similar to what Counselor Ryan said, so I won't take much time, but do want to acknowledge that I've been at quite a few of the community events that you've been at and have been receptive. You've been receptive to a lot of community and counselor and other stakeholder recommendations for outreach. So just wanted to publicly say that here, and thank you for your work on that.
All right. Thank you all for coming. And for our community members, lakewoodtogether.org has more information on the topic. If you have questions, go in through there, or of course, as always, reach out to your counselor, and we can get you more information. With that, we'll go ahead and move on to our consent agenda this evening. Before we have the clerk read the consent agenda into the record, do we have any items that anyone would like to request being pulled off of the consent agenda? Counselor over.
How about number 10 and 11?
10 and 11. Anyone else? Nope, okay. All right, we will go ahead and pull item 10 and 11. And with that, will our clerk this evening read in the consent, read into the record the consent agenda minus items 10 and 11?
The consent agenda includes the following. Item seven, Resolution 2024-15, Appointing Members to the Lakewood Advisory Commission. Item eight, Resolution 2024-16, Appointing a Member to the Lakewood Board of Appeals. Item nine, Resolution 2024-17, Reappointing Members to the Lakewood Historic Preservation Commission. Item 12, Resolution 2024-20, Approving a Mutual Non-Disclosure Agreement Governing Confidential Settlement Discussions by and between the Public Service Company of Colorado and the City of Lakewood and authorizing the mayor to sign the unredacted agreement. Item 13, Approving Minutes of the City Council Meetings, City Council Regular Meeting Minutes, February 12th, 2024, February 26th, 2024. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have a motion for the consent agenda?
Mayor Shaw, I move for the approval of the City Council Minutes for adoption of resolutions, all of which are included in the consent agenda items introduced in the record by the city clerk.
Second.
And before we move on to vote, I do not have anyone signed up to speak this evening on the consent agenda. Is there anyone that would like to speak on the consent agenda? Mr. Mace, come on down. I can't see. Is the light on?
Yeah.
Okay.
Good evening, council. Um, the reason I want to speak on the minutes is, again, when you go on Lakewood Speaks, they're very hard to find. I am making the suggestion, take them off Lakewood Speaks, put them on the actual website. So we can, as public members, we can actually find them and read them. I did make a comment to our city clerk when it, when... when it, when the actual computer goes down, why doesn't Lakewood carry paper copies? This is, and send them to the library because of the simple fact, public, this should be considered public information. And I don't see it as being public information. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Mace. All right. And with that, we'll go ahead and vote on the consent agenda. Again, this is less items, item 10 and 11. Counselor Cruz, I don't have your vote. I don't have your vote. All right. Okay, and consent agenda passes. 11 yeas, 10 nays. Okay, then moving on to item 10 for the evening, will the clerk please read in item 10?
Item 10, Resolution 2024-18, appointing a member to the Lakewood Planning Commission, Ward One.
Okay, we'll go through a motion a second, and then open it up to its own individual public comment and council comments.
Mayor, I move for the adoption of Resolution 2024-18.
Second. Okay, and did anybody want to make a comment? Again, I don't, this was on the consent agenda, no signups here. Anyone want to speak on item 10? Okay, open it up to council comments, thoughts, questions. And first I have Counselor Sinks.
Well, I'm sorry, Mayor Protam Shara, I didn't actually hand over to you the consent agenda and the comment as the chair of the screening committee. So I'll take a moment for that, and then Counselor Sinks will commence with yours.
Yes, thank you. I just want to recognize, as we love to do, all of the great residents who step up to serve on boards and commissions and wanted to read into the record the appointments that we just approved through the consent agenda. So I'd love to welcome to the Lakewood Advisory Commission, Mr. Jason Taylor, Ms. Hannah Bergman, Mr. Eric Roberts, to the Historic Preservation Commission, Dr. Kelly Swanshinga, Heather Peterson, and then Board of Appeals Douglas Porter. So thank you for everyone who applied, and for those folks who are appointed, congratulations.
All right, Counselor Sinks.
Thank you. So I'm very happy to have Eliza, or Emo overall, appointed to the Lakewood Planning Commission. She's from Ward One. I worked with her because she was also on the LAC, the Lakewood Advisory Commission, and we served on the same committee, the diversity committee. I found her to be very thoughtful, deep, a very good, deep thinker, and I think she'll be a really great addition to the planning commission. So I'm excited about her stepping up, and we really appreciate her work. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Sinks. Counselor over.
Yes, I'm going to have to be a no on this one. I believe the screening committee made a mistake in not re-upping Kathy Kentner, and I actually believe it was a pretty political move, because she ran for mayor. And so, and sometimes we're politicians up here, and that's the way it goes. So in this case, I'll just be a no.
Thank you, Counselor over. Mayor Protam Shara's eye.
Yes, thank you. I just wanted to recognize Ms. Kentner's service. It is not unlikely to not get reappointed. In fact, we have a counselor up here who wasn't reappointed for that position. So, you know, we did, I think, a fair job in the screening committee. It was a four-to-one vote, and, you know, I won't get into the semantics of that vote, but I don't know, I don't think that that's a fair accusation to seem like this is a political move. You know, we're acting with integrity, and the screening committee has quite a big load. So I appreciate that comment, but I think it's a bit unfounded.
Okay, and with that, we'll go ahead and move forward to a vote. So a vote yes is appointing our new member to the Lakewood Planning Commission. All right, and that passes with nine yeas, two nays, the nays being over and nystrom. Moving on to item 11, will the clerk please read item 11 into the record?
Item 11, Resolution 2024-19, establishing an ad hoc committee of members of the city council to review and draft updates to the policy and procedures of the city council.
May I have a motion, please?
Mayor, I move for the adoption of Resolution 2024-19.
Second. Any public comment on policies and procedures, the riveting topic that it is? No. Okay. We'll open it up to counselor questions and thoughts. Do I have any counselors that wish to speak on this topic? Nope. Okay, all right. So a vote will be, a yes vote will be putting in place an ad hoc committee to address, review, and update our policies and procedures. A vote no will be saying, no, we don't want to do that. All right, and that passes 10 yeas, one nay, nay being Counselor over. All right, well, now is the point in the evening where we will shift over to public comment on non-agended items. So this is the point where the public is invited to address the city council on items that did not appear on this evening's agenda. I will make a note that Lakewood Speaks is still open and available for anybody that would like to make their comments there instead of coming up in front. I know that sometimes can be very intimidating. I do ask that all in attendance here observe the decorum of the city council chambers and refrain from applause or audible support or discord with a speaker or the council. If you have any handouts for council, I would ask you to leave it with our clerk for the evening, and she will provide those to us afterwards. So I do have a list up here that we'll go ahead and read through. For anybody that has not signed up that would like to after we're done with this, we will open it back up for that as well. So, Mr. Mace, I have you up here, number one.
Mayor, I have a letter I, that I personally wrote, that I would like to read to council, if this is possible. If not, I will say it. If you want to give me a few extra minutes so I can do that, it's completely up to you.
We have a three-minute limit. I'm happy to, if we need someone to help hold it, we can do that. Or if you want to just read it for three, and then give, we can make copies.
Okay, I can do that. But I will let warn everybody that people are not going to be happy with what I wrote down, but here we go. Personally, I feel this council has been seriously corrupt because of the simple fact we have, you guys aren't listening to us at all. And I also feel that some of the council members have been seriously and are corrupt because of the simple fact, in the ward meetings and on the phones, some of you have been very, very, very rude. Most of you, and I turn to Jacob Labir, don't know what you guys are doing, and I'm sorry to say, but you don't have a clue on what you're doing. And I'm not going to bring up the wards, and I'm not going to bring up the council members. But I do want to personally thank Jacob Labir for returning my call. And some of you don't even know half of what's going on around here on the public comment side. And this is why I say this council has been seriously corrupt. Mayor, you don't even, you know, you guys can't even raise public comment up. We need to get rid of our city manager. She's been on, she's been up here for over 15 years. It is time we move on. And it is time that this council take action and give us somebody else. And if you guys really feel that I'm out of line, that's your opinion, but this is how I feel. Because you're not paying attention to what any of us in ADA have to say. I've been up here numerous times, numerous times, fighting to get Fentanyl taken care of, fighting to get this council to be behind the citizens. And I'm tired of the way this council's acting. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Mace. Mr. Robb, would you be able to make copies if we want to do that? Would you like to make copies to distribute that to council? Mr. Mace?
Yes. There's both letters.
Okay, next, I have Tom Gonzalez? Okay, thank you. And then Ms. Reddick, you're next after that, and then Mike Muller.
Thank you very much. I appreciate the time. Again, you guys all know who I am. I've been up here many times. But first of all, I want to thank you all, because I know it's a hassle coming in like this. I was watching you guys come in, and I really appreciate some of you when you're coming in here and you're meeting the people, greeting the people, excited to be here. Some of you people just do not want to be here, and it shows. And I implore you to go ahead and be the servant that you guys are called to be. Engage with the people, talk to the people, smile at the people. It makes a big difference, because even if you're politicians, we got to be friendly about it. And I want to echo what the gentleman talked about earlier on the, taking the ordinances out. We have a policeman sitting back there. I'll bet you not one person has held him thank you for what he does. And it's sad that we do that with our police department. His hands are tied, and I know that for a fact, because you guys say we give them power and stuff like that. I have talked to numerous police officers, and they say, oh, we can't do that, because it's a hassle to make them come into court. It's a hassle to give them a ticket. We've got ordinances in line. All we got to do is put up a sign that says ordinance such and such, needs to be complied. If you don't, you will be ticketed. We let people, if you're going to let the people do the window washing, buy them some safety vests. If you're going to allow it so people can see them, because they're holding up traffic, they're getting in people's ways, they're harassing people. And all I ask is that, you talk about safety, and we're not implying safety. We're saying, do what you want to do. If you get hurt, then we'll go ahead and look at it. But that officer puts his line, his life on the line every day. And if something were to happen to, he would go ahead and be the first one to stand up and say, hey, I'm here for you. But are we here for them? And I think we need to look at that, because they deserve all the respect that they can get. I back the blue, and I think they need to know that. And we talk about the police department, what they do, how they do it and everything. Their response time is not their fault. Their response time is because we have JFCOM now. We can't call Lakewood, we have to call JFCOM, and they, oh, we'll send somebody out. I think that was the worst thing we ever did, is it took communication away from the police department. But I do want to thank you guys. I've known Glenda for, I don't know how many years, but she used to play softball on my team. But it's good to know, because it's good to watch people smile, because if you don't smile, the job is not worth it. And like I said, I want you to go ahead and look at each other and say, are we doing what we need to do? And I'm going to talk to my Ward Two now. I have never met them. And I have been in Ward Two for 50 years, and I have never once met my Ward representatives. So I asked them to get out and meet the people. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Reddick.
I first put everything in God's hands, because I've come to you on several occasions, and you don't seem to do anything about my situation or other people's situation. When you are governing over housing, you wanted the ability to be over the housing authorities. And I think you need a committee or somebody that will overlook or look into the white-collar crimes that they're committing, and under the federal laws and state and county laws. And I've come to you on several occasions, but you think it's funny? I don't think it's a big joke. I think it's very important that, it could be your mother, your sister, your brother, your children, and if it's happening to me, I was born here. I don't know how many of you were born here. I don't know how many of you, your parents that pay taxes and everything else, but my family is from here. And when I have to come to people that don't even know the laws, and I've asked you, you have a district attorney that could tell you which laws are being broken. And if you don't want to deal with it, please get somebody that'll look into the white-collar crimes that are going on. I put it in God's hands that every single one of you are responsible. Because if you wanted these jobs and you were, we voted you in. We voted you in so that you would be working with your constituents. But it doesn't seem that it's all about, oh, we'll help our friends, oh, we'll help ourselves for the greed, for the money. But what are you doing for your constituents? How many times have, since 2018, 15 letters from doctors saying how ill I'm becoming, but do you care? But if it was your mother, or your grandmother, or your sister, or your little girl, you would do something about it. But because I'm a biracial woman, I don't see too many minorities here. I don't see too many minorities, even in the planning committee. I went to all of those groups. I don't see minorities in these areas. Because why? We're not as important, we're not quite privileged, is that it? Because why hasn't anything been, but if it had been your daughter, or somebody in your family, you'd be doing something about it. I came in here one day, and you were bringing an indigenous person. Do you know, I see yous giving your kids awards and everything, but I didn't even see yous invite the indigenous person's family down here with their father to take a certificate, or the rest of us indigenous people that were in this building. Or have I seen you bring up, it was Black Month, and did you bring them in to speak? No, because they're not white privileged. But this needs to stop. We, I'm an indigenous woman. This is my land. We welcomed you in with open arms. But what do we get? We get put down and avoided. How much genocide continues to go on? It continues.
Ms. Reddick, your time has expired.
I've been asking you to get a committee to help you out, since you don't know the laws. Something needs to be done, and an investigation has to be looked into, all these things that are going on with the housing authority that are white-collar laws that are not being abided by.
Thank you.
And it sure is funny, anybody else, if I was white, you wouldn't say, oh, it's your time up, you let them speak on.
Mr. Muller.
And I would like you to look at some of the Youtubes, and you'll see, before even came, this has been going how long?
Ms. Reddick, I really appreciate you coming, but your time is expired. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Muller? Mr. Muller. And then after Mr. Muller, we have Chuck Schuler and then Charles Fay.
Before my time starts, I'd like just everybody to think about this young lady that died. It was from good intentions, but it had terrible results. Just pray for her family. Okay. Let's get into business here. Denver in 2020 had a crime rate of 2.4 violent crimes per thousand. This is when the president opened up the gates and let all the illegals in. That was, Denver is now at 7.2% per thousand people. This is in 2023. That's a 300% increase in three years. That's amazing. But you know what the most amazing part about that is? Is that Lakewood is at 8.19. That puts us in the top, well, the top or the bottom 10% worse cities in the nation. Lakewood in violent crimes. Normally I would, it's just, it's mind boggling to me. Normally I would say, call the city manager, call the mayor, complain about the crime rate. But I don't want you to call them. Do not call the city manager at 303-987-7050 or the mayor at 303-987-7040. They really don't care what we have to say. So don't call them. The second question is, where is the chief? We hired a new chief. I haven't seen him. I can't get ahold of him on the phone. I can't even get ahold of his assistant on the phone. I wanted to ask him what he was going to do on the crime rate. Once again, don't call the mayor, don't call the city manager at 303-987-7050 or the mayor at 303-987-7050. Let's go to recovery works. I snuck around and did some snooping around and I found out that that there was no Lakewood residents in either of the motels that we have, the one in Six and Kipling or the one up in Colfax. The only Lakewood citizens we had up there were the ones that were on a monthly contract and they were trying to kick them out so they put illegals in. There was no Lakewood residents, there was no veterans in the big huge snowstorm we had. That is a complete failure on your part. Once again, don't call Kathy Hodson.
Mr. Muller, your time is expired. Thank you. Mr. Schuler?
Oh, my time just came up too. How came my time up shorter than yours or longer than yours? Huh, how is that possible?
Do we have Mr. Schuler still in the room?
I got all my shit picked up here. I am going to drop off this list of questions for the mayor and Kathy Hodson. I want an answer by next week.
Then we have Charles Fay. Ms. Poston, you're up.
I'm from unincorporated Jefferson County and I'm here because what they were talking about with the LAC proposal today. And first I'd like to say how disappointed I was that you all did not take public comment before that and just considered your opinions more important than public comment and just voted. I came here to give public comment and now I am after the vote to lower on the committee to the proposal to lower the penalties for various crimes committed by the homeless. I am neutral on this because last Thursday I came to a meeting here in City Council Building. It was legislative amazing. And at eight o'clock in the morning, there was a homeless man sleeping next to the building. And when I went inside and reported this to the receptionist, I told them that I was told they were aware of it and there were rules. And I said, I'm aware of the rules. Has he been out here three nights in a row? What's going on here? And I got no answer. This is the picture and as you can see, that is the viewpoint where you can see that the Lakewood Art Council is there. So this is right next to your door. This is just one example of how rules and ordinances of the city are being ignored anyway. So it doesn't matter what the city council does because nobody is enforcing the rules. When I called to complain about people squeegeeing my windshield on Wadsworth and Colfax, I was told there was no resources to do anything about this activity. I was genuinely afraid. Somebody was with me and they were waving their squeegee at me and I felt like they could break my window, they could hurt me. It was not a good situation. I did was able to get ahold of the aide for the police chief and I was told that there are no resources to do this kind of thing. No resources. So I just want you to say, to say that you all went on the record today saying that these are good laws and then you proceeded to show us how soft on crime you really are. Thank you very much. And once again, I can't tell you how disappointed I am that you didn't take beforehand. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Poston. And we have Catherine Stone up next.
Hi, I'm here on behalf of State Billmar Park. I have to tell you that when I first saw, I've lived in this area forever and I didn't know anything about this park. And the first time I went there, I was overwhelmed by the natural beauty. It's amazing. And just the idea that this big giant building is going to go in there with all these extra people. You know, I experienced this up in the Highlands 15 years ago. It was so charming and then they did this infill project and now it's a giant headache. You know, you have to have a permit to park. I never go there. And the same thing happened on North Tennyson and the same thing's going to happen here. And I can't imagine that the advantages will outweigh the disadvantages of this with all this extra traffic and chasing the birds away and cutting down all those trees. It's just heartbreaking to me and I hope that everyone will take that into consideration and put this big building out towards Kipling or something, not in the middle of this beautiful area. And that's all I'm here for. I do appreciate you all.
Thank you. Thank you for joining us. Do we have anybody else in chambers this evening that would still like to speak? Speak now or for the evening, hold your peace. All right. Well, we will go ahead then and shift over to general business. We have a city council request from Councillor Sinks and Mayor Protam Sharazae this evening for discussion and consideration.
So we're, Councillor Sinks and I are asking a request for action, council action to direct the planning commission to review the relationship between university college use of residential properties. Such educational entities own within neighborhoods abutting the university college and the impact upon neighborhoods in which such residential properties are located and provide recommendations for the city council for possible modifications to the zoning code, which will address this matter. We, we're unique in Ward One in that we have the only university college. And so we did have a ruling from the courts recently around student living units that helped to solve that, but there's still some questions about university use in the neighborhood. I know that you've heard in great detail from many of our neighbors in Ward One, but what we'd like to do is just to provide clarity on this, to allow for code enforcement to enforce if that is what is applicable or for the neighbors to get some clarity on what is, how these properties can be used within the law. And so we're, you saw that there were two comments. I have one more statement and then I'll pass it over to Councillor Sinks. But there were two comments on Lakewood speaks and I have heard from neighbors around just the planning commission's scheduling this. You know, the anticipation is that we hope that council will approve this and have the planning commission weigh in on this. There was some reaction from the community that this is moving fast. It is not moving fast. There will be three hearings. So the April 3rd meeting is a conversation just as they've done with the other five requests that we put over to the planning commission and it just allows them to set forth their process for how they're going to approach this and there'll be two additional public hearings. So I just wanted to make sure that the community understood that. This isn't one and done. This is going to be a lengthy process, but we would love council support and joining us to just find a resolution, the community, particularly in Ward One, but this could be applicable in the future would be desperate for this. Councillor Labir is laughing because he's had this conversation for 50 years. But I'll pass that over to Councillor Sinks if you had anything you wanted to add.
Yes, I'll just add especially for those listening, a little bit more of the background that CCU's easternmost property boundary is at Cody Street and they have property on the west side of Cody Street, which is allowed for their university use by the zoning. However, they've purchased on the east side of Cody, some duplexes and students were living in those duplexes. And so then the court case and the appeals court said, no, students cannot live there. It's not zoned for that. So the students moved out. Then the college said, well, yes, we own these duplexes and people can live in them. And so they let, for example, I think there's a representative that goes around the country talking about CCU. And then when he's home, when he's here in Lakewood, then he can stay at the duplex. In addition, some missionaries might be staying in a duplex as well. And so some neighbors are concerned that that is also university use. And so we just want to put it to rest. Either way, is it university use to let people, regular people, but they are connected with CCU, to let them live in the university owned duplexes? Or is it bi-zoning university use and they can't live, anyone connected with, the university cannot live? So we're just going to get a final definition on what's allowed and what's not, to put it to rest, we hope. Did I, did I relate that example clearly? Did I misspeak on anything?
No, I think you did a good job and you have great contacts because you did one term of service on the planning commission. And so I just think that that's an important thing to recognize as well.
Thank you. It's, it is very tangled in so many different issues. And I've seen online, there's this game that you can untangle one thread and one thread. And so maybe we still have just a couple of threads to untangle. And so that's what we're after with asking for this resolution to finally untangle all the threads. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. And we'll move on to council questions. First we'll start with Councillor Labir and then I've got Mia Guerrero.
I just wanted to say, if I never had to talk about this issue again, it wouldn't be soon enough. But now happy to, yeah, so I'm happy to support you all and whatever you think is appropriate. I do wonder if maybe there's, I mean, I assume you looked at other strategies, whether or not we just had an executive session about this or anything else. I assume you all did your due diligence, knowing you. So I would be very supportive of it. And if you want to address that.
We did get some advice from the legal team and so this is the best path forward so that this is a public conversation again. We did get some clarity from the courts on the precision of the student living definition. There is some gray area here and so because the planning commission is quasi judicial and they're meant to operate impartially and unbiasedly, then I think it would be really helpful for them to have some opinions in this as well.
Councillor Mayor Guerrero.
I have certainly been briefed in various formats on this issue. I think though for, I wonder if you have any recommendations of either like the best ways to get caught up as this starts to rekindle and to re-move to anyone who is more familiar, so both Ward One folks, I think Councillor Labir, you might also have notions, our staff, but I think that that might be helpful too because I don't want us to get stuck in a place where, given that this is a little bit, it sounds like it's bringing up some past things for everybody and that was what the comment said too. It was like, this is the same. But what I'm hearing is fundamentally the circumstances has changed given a court case and a decision that some of the like specifics of the questions, complaints or like land use notions are, have shifted, right? I'm getting this correct. And so what I don't want to do is actually rehash all of the questions that have already been undertaken by previous councils, by previous committees, right? Like there's been a ton of work on this issue and so I just wonder, I think I'm a yes on this. I believe that there is a substantial thing that has changed that we need to then move on. And I think that university land use is very unique. Like it's, there's just not other great easy ways beyond looking at like university and college towns, which like, which certainly is not, right? And so we're just in a really unique position. So I, so therefore I'm a yes on this. I recognize the importance of continuing to work with and to legislate and to, and to govern the university properties, but also wonder if that can either be something that perhaps staff helps to like pull together, that we can get council an email with reading materials over the next many months that we can go through on our own or if either any of you that I also mentioned on the bench have specific ideas.
I think that's a great point and that's part of why we tried to narrow the questions at the end of this proposal because we don't want to rehash history. We know the court rulings and we don't want to keep going back on things that have already been decided. I think the planning commission has put together a thoughtful process for public hearings and I have no doubt that the history lessons will be available in those public hearings. So I would encourage folks to maybe consider listening in on those opportunities and then if there are still gaps in understanding, I imagine we're going to hear a recommendation from the planning commission with some historical context there as well. So I think that there'll be a lot of opportunity. Councillor Sinks and I have a lot of information on this, Councillor Labir, as you know. So happy to answer any questions that come up for that, but you know too in the community who are, who can answer questions as well too, so.
You know, get to thinking the meeting's over and another hand goes up. That's twice you've done that this evening. Councillor Low.
Forgive me, Madam Mayor. No, I will be a yes vote. I certainly defer to our Ward One councillors on this and they clearly study the issue more than I have. Makes sense. The only thing I want to flag is our planning commission, from a couple of conversations I've had with members, certainly is getting a number- I've had with members, certainly is getting a number of assignments stacked up to them. I think this makes sense. I think this absolutely belongs in their domain. I just want us to, I just would suggest that we should be, we should be thoughtful in future meetings about what we're assigning to them. It is, everything we've assigned to them so far makes sense to me. It is, they are potentially a very important resource for us as we think about some of our ambitious housing and homelessness, agenda items that we want to accomplish over the next year, and we should, we should be thoughtful and strategic about making sure they have the bandwidth to do assignments that may be necessary to kind of tee up some important ordinances over the next year. So that's, that's all I was going to add.
Thank you, councillor Lo. Anyone else before we close the floor? All right, and in the vein of being clear with our processes, we are going to go ahead and do a formal vote on this. So a UBS vote would be, yes, city council would like to move this forward to planning commission. Did you make a note of the date, like, moving it out?
Well, so it's, I had a chance to connect with the planning commission. It's my understanding that April 3 is nothing more than a conversation around what that process will look like, and there'll be two additional public hearings, as there has been a total of three opportunities to engage over the course. So there is some flexibility in, like, those additional public hearings, but we would like to keep moving this forward. To councillor Lo's point, we have a lot to get going, so April 3 is merely just an opportunity for the planning commission to discuss how are they going to discuss it.
Okay, so starting on April 3 and moving forward.
Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
Just to clarify, you've been making the statement that we're doing a formal vote. You've used that phrase, but to do a formal vote requires an actual motion and a second. If we're just doing a consensus, like on the pro, the request from LAC earlier, that was just a consensus up or down, that was not an actual formal vote. If we're just doing a consensus, then we should call out this is consensus so that no one is confused.
Okay, so consensus is, my mind is nodding heads, but we've been doing pushing of buttons.
If you're going to actually take a formal vote, you should call for a motion.
Okay. May I have a motion, please?
Mayor, I have a point of order, because I'm unclear. Am I, because I'm on the submission, am I supposed to vote, or are we not voting because we're not, we are voting? Thank you.
Mayor, I move to request that the planning commission review relationships between university college use of residential properties, as indicated by this request for legislative modifications put forward by councillor Sinks and myself.
Second. All right. Vote yes sends it to planning commission. Look at that. You get to end with a unanimous vote this evening. That passes 11 yays, zero nays. Thank you, councillors, for bringing that forward, and with that, we will move on to our executive report this evening.
Thank you, mayor. Just want to announce that on April 1, which is next Monday, we'll be having a study session, as was requested by councillor Oliver. We're calling it Current School Safety, and we're lucky, we're going to have both Chief Phil Smith, as well as the Jeffco School Security Chief, to work together, to make a presentation together to the city council. So that's next Monday, the first, just to let you know, people have said they haven't heard from the chief. You'll hear from the chief, actually two different chiefs, on Monday. And the meeting is virtual only, and it starts at 7:00. Also, interviews are underway for a new position, and that's called the Housing and Livable Communities Manager. This position will be instrumental in forwarding the goals and priorities established by city council, so I'm excited about that, and we'll make sure to do proper introductions once this person is hired and onboard. And finally, under the category of really good news, the city has recently received a grant for $931,000 from DOLA, specifically DOLA's Energy Mineral Impact Assistance Fund. And this money will go toward Charles Whitlock Recreation Center roof and canopy solar program, which is in the parking lot. The solar project will offset 100% of anticipated electricity use at Whitlock and will be the city's first onsite solar project. So really happy to be able to announce that to you. $931,000 from DOLA. So with that, that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you. And ward reports. Do we start with five?
Well, I, excuse me, sorry. Not exactly sure. We have a ton to report, other than we're still working on locking in our ward meeting that we plan on having next month, early in April. We're working on making sure that we have some speakers there to give a presentation, and also we hope at that point to be able to talk about all that's been happening in the last month related to our trip to the National Lake of Cities and all the different stuff we've been working on this month. So we look forward to people participating in that meeting, and you'll be getting an email about that, I believe, sometime next week. So, thanks.
The meeting is the 3rd, Wednesday, the 3rd, at 6:00 PM at, oh my God. It's been a long day. What's the church?
Westwood's?
Yes, thank you.
Westwood's Community Church.
Yes, Westwood's Community Church, yes. Thank you.
Ward 4.
Thank you, mayor. Our Ward 4 meeting is going to be at the Green Mountain Rec Center on April 25 at 7:00. And just as an aside, I had the privilege of attending the Historic Preservation Commission. And for those of you who are not aware, they're involved, among other things, in looking over applications for landmark designations that the city has. So there's national, state, and then there's the City of Lakewood designations. And they made it a point, and I'd like to convey that point of, they're looking for folks who want to apply, and they're willing, ready, and able to help folks with those applications. There's a number of incredibly, incredible professionals involved, as well as just day-to-day folks who are very interested in the issue. And one of the projects they're working on, if you would like to provide more information, is the historical impact of the Glens. They've spent hundreds of hours documenting that, and I will be advocating providing a small stipend to them to help them with those types of projects moving forward. If you are interested in learning more, they have their meetings the 3rd Tuesday of alternating months, so they just had it this month. So not next month, but the following month. That's all I have.
Nothing, okay. Ward 3.
Thank you. I don't have too much, but I did have the opportunity to go to the Blarney on Belmar a couple of weeks ago, which was, I think, the fullest I have ever seen the Belmar Plaza. I mean, even more people, even more people than when the skating rink opened this last holiday season. So it was just really exciting and fun to see that space so activated and see so many folks from our community coming out and spending a day outside and supporting the, you know, the businesses in the Belmar area, and it was just really fabulous. So I'm excited about that. I want to flag that per our new fun rotation, councillor Lo and I are looking at dates in April for our morning breakfast, so stay tuned for that. We will be nailing down a date for that in the coming week. And then I just did want to flag for the public who is still here, we are so delighted that you come and speak to us on Mondays, but I just do want to remind us that public comment is to be addressed to the city council and not to our staff. I saw a couple of members of the public tonight come up and engage with our staff, who are here to help us run an effective meeting, and, you know, you're welcome to lob any complaints that you like at us, but please do address the council. It's extraordinarily inappropriate against our rules of decorum to directly address our staff during a city council meeting. That's not what public comment is for. So please do be respectful of the process and our rules of decorum. Thank you.
Well, I give a big plus one to my co-councillor. That is 100% accurate, and I think would be greatly appreciated in terms of, you know, just having civil constructive meetings. Blarney on Belmar was wonderful. It was awesome. The weather was great. I'm really just hoping that the weather's that good for Earth Day. It's always not good for Earth Day, so maybe this year we'll finally get a really good, maybe Mother Nature will, will finally, finally give us some goodwill. I can think of a couple of reasons, maybe. She's not given us goodwill over the last few years, but hopefully she'll give us some goodwill this year. I can't imagine, I suspect most people caught this, but I just wanted to flag that there was an announcement a couple of weeks ago that the 777 South Yarrow Project will be headed to the planning commission for a public hearing date. As far as I know, as of a few days ago, still TBD. I think they were looking at the May-June timeframe, so a ways into the future, but there will be a chance for a public hearing. I know that was something a lot of members of the public expressed as wanting to happen, wanting a public hearing, and we have a public hearing. And I'm personally, my two cents, I think it's a good, positive development and a good constructive thing for the path forward in that project. There've been several announcements. I have office hours tomorrow. Mostly, it's booked up with Ward 3 constituents, who I'm very excited to sit down with tomorrow, but I think there are one or two spots still open. Between like 12:45 and 2:45, there might be like one or two spots left if anyone wants to snag a last-minute office hour spot with me. I'd be glad to see anyone, anyone from Lakewood, and especially Ward 3 constituents, who want to, want to chat about whatever's on their mind. Looking forward to our breakfast next month. Stay tuned on that. As councillor Stewart mentioned, our rotation is breakfast, then a ward meeting, then office hours each quarter. That's, that's, that's the, that's the pattern. So we'll look forward to more chances to engage with our constituents. And just finally, wanted to give a quick shout-out to Little India and T Street Roadhouse, two restaurants in Belmar that donated quite a bit of food to Recovery Works and the Navigation Center during the big, big snow dump a week ago, a little over a week ago. Really appreciated both of them stepping up and just giving, like, a truly vast amount of food to Recovery Works. I can, I can personally confirm it was appreciated by a lot of folks that were there, and that center continues to provide and do a lot of good. While I'm on it, on the subject, I'll just, I'll just give a shout-out to the city staff, which I think, on the whole, really handled a huge, huge snow dump with a lot of grit and grace and hard work, and did a great job handling a great deal of heavy, wet snow. So thank you to our hard-working staff on that.
Ward 2.
Wonderful, thank you. Yeah, and want to express my gratitude to Little India and T Street as well for providing that food, and to councillor Lo for coordinating that in service of the weather shelter in Ward 2. That serves, I think, our whole city, so. And on that topic, our extreme weather shelter is open again tonight, and so we're really grateful to the partners, Recovery Works, Bayard Enterprises, and of course, our staff, who make that possible and really do save lives. I will share a brief story. When we weren't totally sure if the shelter was going to be opening a couple of weeks ago, you know, I had some constituents reaching out to me, and then when the decision was made to open that shelter, I had somebody reach out from the Lakewood Native Methodist Church, and somebody had come to their doorstep on the verge of frostbite, who they then took to the shelter, and they were able to be safe and not seek any, have any harm done to them in the, in the weather. So I think that that was really a meaningful, it's a meaningful space, and I just can't emphasize my gratitude enough to all of the partnerships that make that happen, so thank you. And since we're going in reverse order, I'm going to steal some thunder and say, Ward 1 and 2 will be having a joint ward meeting in April. It'll be fun. Join us. It'll be April 20 at Holy Shepherd on 9th and Kipling at 9:30 AM. And do want to shout out our Two Creeks folks who have canceled their meeting to come to this meeting, so we appreciate your flexibility with us on that, and we will be focusing on sustainability. So really excited about our upcoming joint ward meeting. Our communities in Ward 1 and 2 are so connected, and people often ask us to come together on this, so really excited for the partnership with my fellow councillors on this meeting. I think additionally, just want to shout out, the 40 West is having their first art crawl of the year on April 5. Lots of family-friendly fun. Please come out and join and support our local artists. And lastly, my co-councillor, councillor Mayor Guerrero and I were able to join Sustainable Morse Park for a meeting on walkability, bikability, and horseability, because there are many horses in Morse Park. And so they are putting together a task force on how to make the area safer for people who are on foot, on bike, and on horse. And so if this is of interest to you, which we know is true of many folks in our community, please connect with Sustainable Morse Park, and if you don't know how to do that, please reach out to us. So I'm so grateful to all the folks at our community at every level who are working really hard to keep moving our city forward.
Councillor Mayor Guerrero, do you have anything to add?
Councillor Cruz did the majority of it. There was a long list, so I was double-checking some of my various screens for notes. I want to add that we have a handful of neighborhood cleanups coming up. So we have the April, on April 13, Two Creeks Neighborhood Association is going to do a cleanup, I believe that's of 10th Avenue? There was discussion about if it's 13th Avenue or 10th Avenue. There's many cleanups planned, so there will be posted meeting spot for that, and I am also happy to provide additional information. It is something that they're pulling together quickly, as they are hoping to do one before the annual Colfax cleanup, which is more of a joint project, and it is the week before the Colfax Marathon runs through the city of Lakewood, and that is on May 11. And that meetup, as always, is at 7:00 in the morning, and on Saturday, May 11, in front of the 40 West Art Hub. It's honestly a bit of a delightful experience, and I imagine the other cleanups will be similarly. And then they are going to plan another one or two cleanup days in the Two Creeks neighborhood between now and, I believe, September, during a warmer month. So that's a whole line of programming that Two Creeks Neighborhood Association doesn't feel that they have the capacity to make a separate, sustainable neighborhood, but they are certainly still doing their part to try to make sure that they are creating a more sustainable, beautiful, less polluted Lakewood, which I think is fabulous. The ward meeting was talked about, and the 40 West first Fridays, the first, like, official one with outdoor programming of the year due to the weather, is April. And so that is next week, which should be extremely delightful. And that, and then as a complete aside, we're going to have another solar eclipse. It's on April 8, and it's very fun. It's in the middle of the day, and if you work somewhere where you're able to go out, don't stare at the sun directly. Use either a pinhole, you can look at YouTube videos, or there are those glasses, maybe you still have them left over for our last solar eclipse. I am personally traveling slightly further south in order to see it in totality, so I'm very excited about that space event. And I believe that is all I have.
All right, Ward 1.
I'll go next, because I am also going down south to experience the totality, so unfortunately, I will not be at the study session on April 8 either. So for the high school seniors graduating soon, I would like to say congratulations. And of course, they're thinking about what's going on in the fall in their lives, and college isn't right for everyone. It could be the military, but if you feel college is right for you, don't discount it because you think you don't have the finances for it. I would like to direct you to Representative Brittany Pedersen's website, peterson.house.gov/students. They have quite a lot of resources on that site and up-to-date information on financial support to understand how to navigate through the federal student aid process. support, to understand how to navigate through the federal student aid process. And if you, if you go, what, how do you spell her name, and all, just email me, and I'll forward you the site. And so I will turn it over now to my co-councillor.
Okay, thank you. Ward meeting on April 20th. We're going to be doing a joint ward meeting, so I think we've already talked about that. I wanted to just highlight Terramo. There was a ruling that came out of the EPA in this last two weeks regarding ethylene oxide, which is something that Terramo uses. They are a medical provider that helps to support cancer treatment. And in order to sterilize their equipment, they have to use this chemical, and there has been a ruling by the EPA to lower the air toxin level, which Terramo will, has been working with the EPA to come into compliance, and I did hear from some representatives there. On the terramoBCT.com/stabilization, you can follow along on the steps that they're taking to get in order with what's happening with the EPA recommendations. Sustainable Neighborhood Network on the 27th is hosting an electric car interest forum here at the Lakewood Cultural Center at 6:30. And then one of Ward one's Sustainable Neighborhood Groups, South of 6th, is hosting a seed and starter giveaway this Saturday at, from 2:00 to 4:00, at South Lakewood Elementary. And then I would also just add, as a parent of small children, there is a Kids Night Out being hosted at the Link on March 29th and April 19th, and this is an opportunity for parents to get away for two whole hours. You can drop off your five to 12-year-olds, there's spots limited, and I imagine they'll go very quickly. So check that out. And that is it for Ward one.
All right. Well, although we are here working this evening, I do want to take a moment to recognize that it is Cesar Chavez Day, and all the changes, and the good work that he did in his time on this planet. One, his motto, that I, for me, just means a lot, I know for all of us on the dais here that work so hard, is, yes, it can be done. Working in a leadership role in government doesn't always feel like, yes, it can be done. And there's a lot of different ways we need to look at things, to see how things might be done. But it's inspiration to think that that is, you know, that is a foundation to something that can really be at our core. So recognizing that this evening. Number of things I do also, I want to, you know, show out gratitude tonight. We had 27 people that submitted public comment in our very unique opportunity this evening for our LAC grassroots submission. So thank you to all 27 of you for sending that over. It does really help us to hear from you, or I guess, read in this case, from you, thoughts from the community on this new topic that we had not been previously discussing, and many of us hadn't been out in the community since then for ward meetings, to be able to hear it. So thank you to all of you. I would like to mention that the cleanup coming up on May 11th, I was going to say something about that. It is a citywide invite. I personally will be out there picking up trash on Colfax. I likewise find it to be quite interesting and fun. So I would love to open it up to my brethren in Ward five, and to all of our other wards to come join us. Colfax, as many of you know, has a lot of history in our city, and it's something that is very important to the past that we have. And I am very grateful that we have the Colfax Marathon, that helps us profile some of the uniqueness and the possibilities that are up there along that corridor. So I did want to extend out Councilor Maia Guerrero's conversation around trash pickup on May 11th specifically. Would love to see many, many of you outside of Ward two joining us. Separately, it is getting to be warm, close, not now, still snowy. But wanted to bring attention to anybody that doesn't know about it, that Lakewood does offer grants for neighborhood get-togethers. It is almost summertime, like, it's not too early to plan this. So for anybody that likes to have driveway, barbecues, picnics, or the like, you can go to lakewood.org GTgrant, and actually, potentially get $100, all the way up to $500, to host your own party in your neighborhood. What a great time to share the word about the comp plan, too. Let one of your councillors know, we would love to be able to help you with that. Separately, I had a really fun opportunity, actually, last week, to visit Red Rocks Community College. They have just welcomed in a new president. Very excited to hear what he has planned for our community. As Councilor Sinks mentioned, there are a lot of different pathways to higher ed, or getting out of high school. Maybe it's university for some, military for others, but community college is an incredible opportunity for many. And what I really love the most is that community colleges, especially Red Rocks, is really embracing other potentially, like, non-traditional routes. Workforce training, upskilling, reskilling our residents, so they also, we're addressing the affordability crisis, and we're addressing the employment need in two birds, one stone's, one of my favorite things. So really excited. Dr. Landon Perius, I actually recommended that he come give us some words on what he's doing. So I do hope that we'll hear from him, City Council as well. And one more thing, and then we will go off into the evening, but I wanted to also, Ms. Hodgson, you had mentioned a very significant grant that we won, by staff's work. $900,000. That is significant. That is not trivial. And also wanted to mention, although the one I wanted to profile this evening, or that I will be, if through the Colorado Department of Public CD-PHE, Health and Environment, thank you. It was $149,000, so it was smaller, but nonetheless impactful to people that will be the receiving end of that. And it's actually Mitchell's Mobile Home Corps in Ward two, and the efforts that will be paid for by this grant will actually help them to better weatherize their own housing units, so they too can be warm and safe in these very snowy times. So thank you very much to staff, and all of your work that you guys have put into that. And, oh, I'm sorry, I did have one more thing that I will mention, and then I'll let you go. We had a calendar update, so just one quick housekeeping item, not super exciting, but April 8th previously had been scheduled as the review of our city attorney. As City Council, this would be an executive session for our annual review for a city attorney. We've actually shifted that. So for those of you that are watching the calendar, that's moved out to the April 22nd, and we will be finishing up the second part of our city manager review instead on April 8th. So just a quick note, that will be updated on the agenda shortly. And with that, we will go ahead and adjourn the meeting. Thank you, everybody that came in to join us tonight.